Good afternoon. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners regular meeting of April the 8th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And good afternoon. Thank you. Sorry. Good afternoon, Jacqueline Penioto, our clerk of the board. And I just was thinking last night, I never even introduce you. And so I want to, please forgive me for that. And you, and I was also going to introduce Jeff Aluto, who I don't see on there. But so we're going to move forward to our regular meeting, which also it starts, as it always does, with silent prayer and also the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's go on and do that for a few moments. Thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our previous session.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Bridget, do we have any public comments that you see?
Madam Commissioner, I do not see any at this time.
Thank you so much. We'll move forward with the Commissioners' comments and motions of Vice President Alicia Reese.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate again the issue of evictions that is happening right now. The CDC has a national moratorium on evictions. However, here in Hamilton County, the court has indicated that they have found a loophole and therefore will not be honoring the CDC's order from what we've been told. I know that there are some that are working on it, legal aid, et cetera. We've had several press conferences and now have an action team. And I want to thank again Sheriff McGuffey and Avtav Pierre Vaughn from the Clerk of Courts, as well as Tim from Jobs and Family Services. And I just wanted to say to anyone who is watching that needs assistance, the number is 946-1000, or they can also apply online at 513relief.org. Also, the Clerk and the Sheriff, they're splitting up the list of the targeted, about 179, close to a little under 200 families that would be immediately affected by this. And they are going to the doors, I think going 40 doors has already been hit with the flyer that was provided by Jobs and Family Services for people to get help. And the sheriffs are out, we're waiting to get that list back in terms of how many have been delivered through the Sheriff's Office. So again, working together in an action team kind of way. And I just want to thank them, as well as the administration and Jobs and Family Services as moving forward. Secondly, I wanted to say that we are still working on getting the bus out. I know we passed the resolution and working and love to get an update. Probably Jeff may have an update in his announcements at his term. But we are working hard to try to get that out moving and grooving. So we could, you know, continue to help people as there is a call for massive vaccinations that are happening. So we're looking forward to that. And wanted to say that one of the things I'm going to be working on and presenting here is a package that helps the homeowners. We're getting a lot of calls from people who own homes. And although Community Action Agency has some help, but they're kind of overloaded. Community Action Agency is doing homes, they're doing rentals, they're doing now. I saw where some vaccine, just a lot going on. And we want people to be able to hang on to their homes. We don't want people to be losing their homes who've been affected by the downturn that has been caused by COVID. So then I'll be coming back with a couple of things that I want us to take a look at. Some are in our preview, but then some we will certainly have to get some partnerships. And I had a good conversation with the auditor and, you know. So some of the things I'm going to be looking at is looking at how we can get some relief, real relief to seniors. Also looking at what we can do with the rate relief of MSD. I think we were looking at some type of holiday that could be helpful. It'll be a short term, but it's certainly, right now, any help people can get. They're looking forward to it. But again, I want to look at how can we work to put some type of moratorium as a relation to senior citizens on their home taxes. What happens is all this development comes and their taxes go way up and they get no kind of real abatement. We do have a program, but you have to apply every year. I hear it's hard. I know some of it deals with the state. But also there's something that we can have with a providing some assistance to home mortgages that I'd like for us to look at. So wanted to put those, those things out as well as asking the treasurer, as the treasurer last time did, he did push it back. I think that's a good thing, but at the end of the day, you still got to pay it. So those are the things that I've been hearing and just wanted to give a heads up that I'll be bringing something back to the board.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I, my announcement today focuses on the Board of Elections because there is a lot going on there as well. They've got a vax and vote effort going on right now. Because as you know, Public Health, Hamilton County Public Health is using the Board of Elections space for their vaccination effort. When you make an appointment, that is where you go. Everyone is spread out and it's a really well-done, very efficient operation. And early voting has now started as well for not only the primary in the city of Cincinnati for the mayor's race, but so many of the other local elections that have primaries. And so they are pushing something out that's called Vax and Vote. So if you make your appointment to get vaccinated through Hamilton County Public Health, you go to the Board of Elections and you can vote in the primary at the same time. So I love this idea. And they're, the two facilities are very close to each other. It's kind of like the same room with a partition down the middle. So it's very convenient if people want to take advantage of that. So I just want to remind people that that's available and they can go to Test and Protect Cincy and make sure that they get registered with Hamilton County Public Health for that vaccine. I, by the way, am going Monday for my second shot. And I'm hoping to not feel terrible on Tuesday for our meeting, but I don't know. Not sure how it's going to go. Madam President, you look to have done very well after your second shot.
You'll do just fine. Yeah.
I don't know, man. I've heard a lot of stories. So anyways, hope to be here on Tuesday. But regardless, Vax and Vote is happening at the Board of Elections in Norwood. And the other thing related to the BOE is that the Director and the Assistant Director, so Sherry Pollan and Sally Chrisel, both received an award from the League of Women Voters for their Making Democracy Work. It's an annual event, a celebration about voting and democracy. And Hamilton County Board of Elections was recognized for the good work that they've been doing, especially under a very difficult time of COVID. And so I just wanted to extend a congratulatory shout out to the two of them for all their hard work and really the partnership that they've had with this board and expanding the space over there. And then allowing for that space to be used for other things such as vaccinations. So it's a great partnership. It continues. And thank you to the Board of Elections, Board members also, who were very instrumental. Gwen McFarland, now Joe Mallory, Chip Gerhart, and Alex Triantefilo. So anyways, big shout out to the BOE, all things BOE today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few comments. I'm going to limit actually my activities since we had our last meeting because I was in a very exciting meeting this morning with OKI and our transportation agency. And it sounds a little boring, but I thought there were some things that you guys need to know about. Before I moved to that, I was in a press conference on Tuesday with the Health Collaborative. And they are, they have a campaign going that says, Get Your Vax. And their goal, and our goal should be also, is 80% of the people in Hamilton County to be vaccinated by July the 4th. And it's a lofty goal, but I believe that it's realistic and that we can make that happen. So as I was speaking earlier about OKI, I said in the budget finance meeting first about nine o'clock this morning. And Judge Moore, who is the president of the NACO for Commissioners, he's on that board also. And he talked about the guidelines for the new monies that are coming in to the county. The guidelines should be here in the next, by the next two weeks. And money should be arriving at the end of the month. So we hope that that happens. And of course, we need the guidelines before we get the money. So, so we don't have long to wait. And I also found out that our county contributions to be a part of that agency, OKI, will not change for this year. Will continue to pay what we've been paying. And then there was some talk about a very good guest speaker for the NACO annual meeting. I won't say it out loud, but it'll be someone, of course, related to transportation through the White House. So you can kind of imagine who that might be. There will be no meetings with OKI in July or August, but they are working to try and see if this representative can come for the annual meeting. He is a resident of Indiana. Yes. So also there's lots of money coming down for electrical vehicles. So as we look at that, we, as a board, can consider and talk about where we are with that, if we want to pursue any sort of funds as it relates to electrical vehicles. So OKI financially are doing very well. They had an audit and did very well, got 10 commendations. And also they talked about how ODAT, old OKI, almost a million dollars in 2020. They did not receive the money, but OKI was still able to be solvent and continue their, their work. But they have received the million dollars now. But that has a lot to do with the fiscal people that they have working for OKI, which there will be a new Finance Director. I'm not sure, Commissioner Drehouse, you may know how long the past, what the Finance Director now, she's got a different name. Can't think of it now, but retiring.
She, she's very good. I know who you mean. I had a funeral this morning, so I missed the meeting, but.
Okay.
She's very good. Yeah.
They have hired a young African-American woman to be their new Finance Director. They are also looking at diversity and also, of course, qualifications. So they were able to talk about her today. Just in general, they did a survey as far as the traffic flow. And all traffic since March of 19, up until now, has gone down 8.5%. Cars are down 11% and trucks are also down 11%. As far as the rush hours, we consider the rush hour, it's down 19%. And of course, we know that because more people are working at home, so that's a given. But they wanted to give us those totals. So that was all through the Budget Committee. I'm going to go to the Regular Committee of OKI. And CVG, the Director, Candace McGraw is the Director, gave a fantastic PowerPoint. And she said in 2019, they were down 40% as far as travelers. Through 2020, down 95%. Business travel is down 80 to 85%, but leisure travel is coming up. They also will have two new carriers starting May the 14th. Sun County is the name, and they will be going straight to Minneapolis. And there is also Alaska Airlines going straight to Seattle. She also indicated that air cargo, they have had 1.2 million tons of cargo space during this time. I'm sure a lot of it is mine throughout the outside places that we ordered things for. So they've been doing very well with that. She's calling CVG the epicenter of e-commerce with DHL being there. And another facility is Atlas Air Worldwide. DHL is on 245 acres of land right next to CVG. They employ 4,800 employees. So Amazon is building another facility on 650 acres. And they will be employing, currently they have 2,000, but it was not clear how many more they were employing. So I thought that information was good, that she's excited about, things are looking up. But of course, as the same as the tourism industry here and everywhere else, it's not where it needs to be. But she's very positive and we're, we're very positive about. And that will end my report. I'll move on unless there's some questions or comments. I will move on to Jeff Aluto, our County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. I was on a little bit earlier. I was just, I was muted. My, my video is off. So I didn't want you to think I was coming late to the meeting. Just a couple of items on, for comment, and then one by leave item specifically. But first and foremost, I did want to double down on Commissioner Drehouse's comments congratulating Sherry Pollan and Sally Chrisel on their League of Women Voters Award for Making Democracy Work. I think we all know what a fantastic job they did this past year. And just want to echo my congratulations there as well. Secondly, as the board is aware, but just for general public knowledge, back in either the beginning part of this year, late last year, I had messaged to our workforce that we would be continuing in a remote work environment through the end of May. And we did that because of the state of the pandemic, as well as to give people as much certainty as possible. As we all know, the, the transition to and from remote working can be very difficult, both professionally and personally. I sent something out to the workforce earlier on this week indicating again that we would be looking for a June 1st transition back to work. So I would imagine that over the course of June and July, we will be transitioning most Board of County Commissioner departments back to an in-person work environment. I will say though, that number one, some of this, as I, as I indicated, will be through a transition. So it may not happen overnight. Number two, we are taking a very hard look at where those departments and divisions might be, where we have found, as is the case, I think, throughout both the public and private sector, that there are simply some areas where a remote work environment is more efficient and works better for that particular operation. And so where that is the case, we're going to be looking hard at those, at those areas. But we want to make sure that we continue to, to do what is most efficient and provides us the best opportunity to serve our customers as well. So more to come on that. And I'll report to the, back to the board on where we find those opportunities and what the final disposition of our, of our workforce is as we, as we enter the summer and, and complete our transition. Third, just wanted to, following up on our conversation from last week, we are working on scheduling the internal and external stakeholder work groups associated with our deliberation of the American Rescue Plan dollars, or I'm sorry. Yes, the American Rescue Plan dollars. So again, we wanted to have it, some internal stakeholders and external stakeholders to provide some general guidance to the county on the problems they're seeing, the best way to go about leveraging these dollars. So that as we come back to the board with a recommendation on that plan, that it is in fact informed by our stakeholders throughout the community. So we're going to be looking to pull that together over the next two, two and a half weeks. And we'll certainly report back to the board. I know as, as we acknowledged last time, it is, we have a very aggressive schedule for trying to get a recommended plan back to the board. But I'm hopeful that we can stay on that schedule so that we can be as, as seamless with the delivery of those dollars from the federal government to the county as possible. Because I know that the board is going to be getting questions very quickly about how are we going to employ these dollars? And we want to make sure that we are providing you with our recommendation as quickly as we can. Additionally, as it relates to timelines, I said, had sent a communication to the board earlier this week. It might have been late last week. It's, it's hard to believe, but we are getting back into the budget cycle again. So as we look to begin the technical process of, of pulling together the initial stages of a, of a general fund and all funds budget, had requested of the board if we could get some initial policy guidance by June 1st, just to make sure that as we begin the process of pulling the budget together, we can be mindful of those areas where we might need to ensure that we have resources available to address board policy items. And certainly there'll be some time for discussion on that as we go through the process. But just wanted to make sure we're starting that process as early as we possibly can. And finally, as Commissioner Reese had, had asked specifically about the status of the bus, so I did want to address that. As the board may be aware, we had brought on a new engagement coordinator under our Office of Equity and Economic Inclusion. And that individual who is working for, for Robert Bell is engaged right now, full-time on trying to drive this project over the goal line. And we're looking at both temporary solutions to get something on the ground as quickly as we possibly can preferably in April to get this thing launched. And we're looking at leveraging relationships with existing partners to get that done. We are also simultaneously looking at the long-term strategy of procuring an asset long-term for the county's use, because I think we do want to have a county-owned asset long-term for that project. But we're doing all of this concurrently. We're, none of this is being done in sequential format. So there's nothing that is really bottlenecking anything else on this. We're working the short-term strategy as we're working the long-term strategy, as we are also simultaneously working on issues relating to programming of that vehicle as well. So that when, as soon as we have the, the asset, we can program it and get it into the community as quickly as possible. So it's a brief update on, on the progress on, on the bus. And that completes my comments. I do have a one by leave.
Excuse me, Jeff. Any of the Commissioners have any questions or comments as it relates to Jeff's report? No?
No.
Okay, move forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave item one on your agenda. This is a petition for the annexation of 1.608 acres from Columbia Township to the city of Madeira. As is typical in these processes, the recommendation here is for the board to receive for the record and refer to the county engineer, who, under the Ohio Revised Code, is responsible for taking those petitions and making sure that legal descriptions match, that the, that the, the boundary lines of the annex parcels match up, et cetera, that services are provided where needed, et cetera. I did reach out to the Township Administrator in Columbia Township, who indicated that there is no controversy or opposition associated with this particular item. So I wouldn't expect that it's something you're going to be hearing a large amount on. But they just want to let the board be aware of that before receiving it for the record.
Thank you. Any questions or comments as it relates to by leave one? Okay. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record by leave one.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
So to our regular agenda items, and that comes back to you, Jeff. Thank you, Madam President. So on your regular agenda, item number one is Resolution Number P051-21, authorizing the award of ITB 021-21. This is the execution of agreement with agricultural design. This is our annual sod replacement at the practice fields down at Paul Brown Stadium. The amount listed in the agreement is $176,486. I do need to indicate to the board that after conferring with Joe Feldkamp, our director of stadium parking, it's, it's very possible that number is going to be lower. Our groundskeepers down at this, at the stadium are doing a great job working on some different ways to make sure that we're preserving grass from year, year to year, to make sure that we don't have to resod as much. So that I expect that 176,000 to be a maximum amount. We're hoping that it comes in under that. But nonetheless, that would be what the maximum contract would be. And the administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any comments, Vice President Reese?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse? Well, I think it's good to know also that with this resolution, it only adds on to some of the requests that have been made as regards to FIFA 2026. This was something that needed to be done, but it will certainly help us as we move toward the World Cup when it comes here. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number P051-21?
Are you making the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
That's great that you guys don't just say yes and no, that you keep me in order. We need to do this. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So I know when I said it didn't sound right to me. So anyway, we'll move on to item number two.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a resolution amending the agreement with the Center for Closing the Health Gap and the Board of County Commissioners. The initial contract, as you remember through the care, this is all CARES Act funded. This was $120,000. We are adding, we are adding 28,000 to that contract, bringing that contract amount to 148,000. This is for the continuation of their marketing campaign, primarily the "We Must Save Us" campaign. There are flyers, billboards, television, and radio ads associated with this. I think the website alone has received views by over 50,000 users. So it's been a very successful campaign in the community. And this allows them to continue that work through 2021 with that additional 28,000. So the administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, they, they do great work. They've been.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I wanted to thank Renee Mahafe Harris for partnering with us on this. This gets to the issue of equity, when especially as we are rolling out the vaccine. And Renee's been a great partner in closing the health gap. She's been a great partner with the county. So I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. Yeah.
I think this is money well spent.
Yeah. You just said what I was getting ready to say. So that's a great mind think alike.
You asked me if I had any comments, so.
Great. So I like to make a motion to adopt item number two.
Second.
Ms. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number three is a resolution approving or amending our CARES Act plan in reallocating coronavirus relief fund amounts of 128,680 to homeless sheltering. So this amends our plan to up the amount from, in our homeless sheltering line item. These dollars are coming from the alternative, the line item for the alternative care facility. The board will recall that we had money set aside, I think it was 500,000, for the alternative care facility that we were holding on to for as long as we possibly could, wanting to ensure that we were not going to have need of a, of an alternative care facility through the course of the pandemic. We started to feel that way towards the end of last year that we would not, but we still held on to it through this year. But now that we think can hopefully see that we will not have need for that facility, we're going to reallocate some of those dollars towards this particular project, which relates back to a conversation the board had last week in staff meeting regarding Maslow's Army, who is operating the day shelter under a contract with strategies to end homelessness. So this will ensure that the Maslow's Army's day shelter can stay operating. There's three months worth of operating costs associated here. And we will, as we go through the stakeholder process, look at the continuation of that program and what will happen with that day shelter program as we start to come out of the pandemic, et cetera. And if there's additional dollars that are necessary, that certainly could be a policy item for consideration as we look to allocate American Rescue Plan dollars. And happy to answer any questions. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
Just want to say I certainly support this item. I just, one technical thing in terms of if someone is, is watching or following our calendar. The, the last one that we voted on that we all support with the health gap, it has the total contract at 148,000. We, we voted on only adding 28,000. I think that's very important to note. Because when you look at the second one, it has 128,680, which we're getting ready to vote on for the organization. The Organization for Homelessness. That is not the total contract, we are voting for an additional 128,680 dollars. Am I correct on that? That will help.
That is correct, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanted. Cause the way it's written, someone was saying, Health Gap was, we, we only voted on 28,000 to add to their contract. But this one actually will help with three months and the total that we're adding to additional add. Is 128,680 dollars.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarification. Commissioner Drehouse, any comments?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify also that when we talk about the alternative care facility, we're talking about the Duke Energy Center. Just for those that aren't familiar with how that all played out last year, we did have it set up. I think we're all hopeful that we're not going to need that facility to. Have a step down facility from hospitals because they were getting so crowded at that time. That hopefully will not be happening here in the future, I think we're all very optimistic about that and so that's. Why these funds have been made available, cause I don't know that alternative care facility, I'm not sure everybody understands what that, that means. So this is the, the extra beds at the Duke.
Jeff, you want to speak to that?
Uh, I would just say that is, that's correct as well, so that, that was, the idea was that there. At some point in time could be the need for the county to pay certain costs associated with a step down. Or overflow facility to the degree the hospitals in, in terms of care. And, and in general, could not take additional patients or needed that additional capacity. And if we could move people out into some sort of a step down facility, that that would free up those, that would free up those beds in the hospital. Fortunately, we never got to that point and hopefully we don't get to that point. Through this, this pandemic and I think as we're, now as we're seeing. A, a little bit of relief on, on, on that, from that perspective, we feel much more comfortable freeing up some of these dollars. And to the degree that we did need to employ a, a facility like this in, in the future. We know we're going to have other resources available as well, so.
So I appreciate the creative thinking that took place and also moving very quickly to make things happen, so. Very appreciative of that and as you were saying earlier, we can evaluate whether or not there's a need to add additional monies for additional. Purposes as we look at the budget itself. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number four is the engineer, I see Eric Beck is on.
Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good afternoon.
I would like to follow up on one of your comments about OKI, I find it interesting that. Your enjoyment with the traffic numbers, you sure you don't want to be an engineer?
Right.
Yeah, the, the traffic counts have gone down, they're, they've come, come back, but you couldn't tell it out there today driving in it, that's for sure. Item number four that we have here is a resolution. Authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Sycamore Township. For the installation of internal, internally illuminated street sign blades at various intersections in Sycamore Township. This is no cost to the county, Sycamore Township wishes to change out some street blades. This allows us to enter an agreement for them to maintain those street blades.
Okay, thank you so much. I'd like to make, any, any questions or comments, I see county no cost, probably. No questions, but yes, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt, adopt item number four.
Second.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number five is a, a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County. And Miami Township for application to Ohio Public Works Commission. For funds for the construction improvements to Shady Lane and Bridgetown Road. We have received grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission, this. Agreement splits out who's responsible for what portions. The total estimated construction cost is 1,797,460 dollars. OPWC will be picking up 50% of that cost. Permissive road funds will be 30% and 20% from Miami Township.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number five.
Second.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number six.
Yes, this is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the city of Loveland. For application to the Ohio Public Works Commission. For funds for the construction improvements to the Loveland Road Bridge. In Loveland, again, this is one where we've applied for. OPWC funding and, and received it. And this lays out who's responsible for what portions. The estimated construction cost is 693,998 dollars. OPWC will be paying 40%. 50% will come from permissive auto funds and the remaining 10% from the city of Loveland.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Eric, I'm just really impressed on the grant writing and the amount of grant funding that we're receiving. And so do you have your separate grant writing department or are you writing all these?
We are doing these, we have about three or four people that. Put these together each year with OPWC.
Oh, that's great, really impressive.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number six.
Second.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much, Eric.
Thank you.
Unless you want to stay on, you're welcome to stay on.
He's gone already.
Really quick. Okay, item number seven is a human resources item, I, Frank I see is on here now.
Yeah, Frank, Frank is on, Madam President, I'll, I'll just tee this up very quickly, so this, this, because this actually relates back to. The American Rescue Plan dollars, so this is in anticipation of. Receiving American Rescue Plan dollars, this would add a position to the table of organization. Paid for with American Rescue Plan funding. The position would be responsible for coordinating and administering the major programs and contracts, et cetera, that come out of the. American Rescue Plan program of the county as ultimately directed by the board, so. Recognizing the staff that we currently have. Working on these programs, we want to try to concentrate. The administrative aspects of these programs and the coordination of it. Within an employee who can pay full time attention to that. I should note that this is the addition of a position to the table of organization, this is not. The funding or this is not the hiring of a position yet, we would still have to pose for that position, et cetera.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Madam President, thanks. I do have a comment. One of the things I have concerned about is. For the last, I guess it'll be the second week in a row and we had something a couple of weeks ago. The continuation of adding positions, we just added one to. The planning, community development, I think it was last week. We don't have the plan, we, as mentioned earlier, we're still waiting on what are, what are going to be the rules or regulations that we could use. And I just prefer for, for my standpoint is to see the plan that. We adopt, that we lay, that we agree to. And then see what needs to happen based on what we, what we come up with in terms of where the American Rescue dollars are. Versus moving toward adding a position and I haven't, we haven't decided on a full plan. It is no secret that I'm not one to add a lot of positions. And, you know, still trying to understand what do we do at a full capacity. I know last year, in some cases, we couldn't go to full capacity. Also, will be clear that I have some concerns based on, I think two weeks ago, the. Equity report that we had and the lack of diversity that we have in. Top line director, top positions. And still waiting, I know we said we're going to do some things differently, but waiting to see what that plan is. Before I start adding more people to the table. And so I just don't want us to be looked upon and. You, you all may have a different opinion, but as it relates to, to me, you've got families out here that are struggling and trying to keep the. The bills paid and trying to put things together and I think that. You know, I want to be very careful in adding a position every time we do something. Cause you've got people out here now having to do two and three jobs, you've got small businesses that do two and three jobs. To, to make it entrepreneurs, doing two and three jobs to try to make the ends meet, so. From my perspective, I would have to vote no today. I had asked for it to maybe be hailed until we get the whole plan, I'd like to see the whole rescue plan, what we decide, what we think is best. And then look at what is the need, if there is a need. Are there, are there areas and positions that can do two or three things with some flexibility? Those are the questions that I had and so for that, I won't be able to just support this today.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President, you know, I'm going to support this. Because, you know, we, it is true that we've added some positions, but. From my perspective, they're necessary positions, one was with the Office of Economic Inclusion and Equity. We need to do more work there and so we added a position. We've got one, planning and development, because we've got additional federal dollars coming. And we need to get that money quickly out to the community and this one relates to the American Rescue Plan. And my context for this is the previous allocation we got from the federal government. Which was 142 million and the effort that needed to be put forth. To get that money out the door and we had staff, many staff working nights and weekends and, and they. Frankly, didn't spend all that much time doing the regular jobs and we, so we were in the middle of a pandemic and. And we had slowed down a bit, so I, it, it worked out. But I do think that this position with even more money coming now from the federal government, I do think a coordinated effort here. Will be very helpful, I, I will once again take the opportunity to thank Holly and Brigid and Joy Pearson and so many others. That helped with the effort the last time, but in this one goes for three years and so I, I feel as though. It's going to take a little more doing and I, I would prefer not to have any of our staff. Who are doing full time jobs otherwise distracted for three years, trying to figure out how to implement this. So that's kind of my, my take on it, the other thing I, I want to emphasize is the money. Paying for this position is not coming out of the general fund, the, these dollars will come from. The 159 million we get from the federal government, it's an allowable use. And so this position will be paid for, for the next three years through those dollars to help administer the dollars. And then I don't, I don't know what will happen after that, but my expectation is that we will have. To review that after those dollars have gone out the door and reevaluate the necessity here, but, but for, at this moment in time, I'm going to be supportive.
Thank you, just a couple of comments, the money is there. And we have a, a department head who has determined that there, the need is there. We're not talking about 10 positions, we're talking about one position and as they come forward with. The qualifications, responsibilities, I believe I can make. Pretty good judgment about whether or not this makes sense, so I'm going to also support this resolution.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify something. The reason I brought that up, every week is one, it's one here, it's one there. I've even asked for flexibility, we've created two positions, one for women and girls, which I support. Boys to men, I don't know if that's started yet, but sounds good and I even asked, could those positions, I asked at the meeting here. Could those positions be flexible? And be able to be cross utilized. I may have a difference of opinion when we say. It's time to get back to work, I mean, I thought everyone here's job was to help the people. Now all we doing is having more money to help the people, we were already doing rental assistance, now we got more. We were already doing some, while we were paying people to do small business. You know, and, and that's contracted out. So that would be doing more, the prosecutor's office are the ones that do the contracts and that a lot of times holds up a lot of things. There's nothing in there to give them more lawyers to get the contracts out the door, so we don't have a case where. For example, the Health Gap had a contract approved and wanted in 2017 and didn't get the contract until 2021. Economic inclusion, I'm all about economic inclusion, but the numbers didn't show that we made any impact in economic inclusion. You know, to have 16 million dollars for upkeep in the fourth quarter. And at the same time, only 1,400 dollars went to minority businesses. So my whole point is, I'm all about efficiency. I'm about getting help out to the people, I certainly think that our employees work really hard. Most of the time, we don't have the money, we want to help people, but the thing that I've always heard my 21 years and. Whether it's a city, whether it's a state, whether it's, was here originally, was we just don't have the money. And a lot of stuff, when I look at the, the county, we contract out a whole bunch of stuff, I mean, a lot of our stuff is contracted out. That's what we vote on every day, we got a bunch of contracts a day we vote on. So my whole point is, when I look at it, it's, it's, it's one today, but it was one last week. It was one next week, it was two that came in and I, I supported it, I wasn't part of the budget. But I went ahead and supported it, but I asked, could women and girls and the boys to men, those positions be cross. Do other things as well and I was told no. I asked with the community development, we just put a position there, that's supposed to be dealing with CARES Act money, could that person also help? With American Rescue, I was told no, now, you know, people out there that are struggling every single day. Businesses, small business, they don't have money to hire someone to answer the phone and another person. To, to, to write a plan and then another person to, to handle emails. They have to do multiple things and we're living in a time where we just got to do multiple things, so. I'm not saying I'm against if we need additional, what I'm saying is. Let me see the plan, let's get the plan together, then we'll know what we need, but why would we, we're, we're putting. Additional people and we don't even have the point, we don't even have the rule, so what we can do. We don't, we haven't even decided what we want to do. I have not seen what, currently what our staff can do. And so that's where, the reason that I wanted, so I wanted just to clear it up, it's not just one position today. I'm starting to see a pattern and I would like to get it as a package. Let's look at the whole plan and if it's, okay, we got our whole plan and it's five people needed, let's do it all at one time. But I just don't like the piecemeal approach, so that's my position, I know you all have a different position. But that is the reason that, you know, I can't go into today, doesn't mean when I get the full plan, it shows that we gonna need more help. But that's what, and my understanding is after this, Mr. Ludo, tell me if I'm right, you won't have to come back to us. For this, once we approve this position and you guys post and do whatever, is there any way that comes back to us once?
There, there, I, I, there may be, there may be some appropriation necessary for it, I'm not sure if, if the, the table, the table of organization adjustment has the appropriation. There may be an appropriation that we need to fund the position, but certainly not for the, not for the posting. And the hiring of the position, but we may need to come back for some financial budget adjustments. Using the Rescue Plan dollars to appropriate those dollars, that would be the next, that would be the only thing that we would need to come back for at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I'm excited about the fact that we talk about inclusion and diversity, we know for many, many years. In the county and other agencies, inclusion and diversity was not considered, but thankfully, our board. Is looking at that and demanding for that. I was thinking about, I'm sure Frank and Jeff have looked at the fact that there are people that are, that were furloughed. And if they were capable of performing the tasks that we're thinking about, certainly they could be used. And I, I'm just of the opinion, different situations demand different strategies. So before we, as I said, did not have the money, we have the ability, we're getting more monies in, so we need. People that are able to, to handle that situation. And if it was in-house, I, I think that we would do it, I have enough confidence in our department heads that that would happen. So I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt item number seven.
Are you making the motion?
Yes.
And I'm going to second the motion.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
No.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much and thank you all for your opinions and your comments, they are very much respected. Let's move on to consent agenda items and before we get to those, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Just a general summary for those that are watching or listening. Our consent agenda items for approval. Include two small grants in behalf of the Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, Solid Waste Management. We also have real property needed by ODOT in the city of Cincinnati. To improve infrastructure and authorize the conveyance to the city of Cincinnati. to improve infrastructure and authorize the conveyance to the city of Cincinnati. And and we also have one additional improvement of tentative agreement between the county and Greater Cincinnati Buildings Trade. That's for adoption. And then for to receive for the record, we have um a surety bond and oath of office for Judge Car- Carrie L. Bloom. And then the municipal court is submitting their annual report for the calendar calendar year of twenty twenty. And the sheriff, uh they have four liquor permits uh that they had no opposition to uh to submit for the record. So I'll open it up for any questions or comments on the consent agenda items. Vice President Reese?
Uh no comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Drehouse?
No comments.
Thank you. So I would like to make a motion to adopt items eight through eleven and receive for the record items twelve through fourteen, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second. Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh that's the end of our agenda, but what I will uh open it up for any additional comments uh from our commissioners, uh Vice President Reese.
Uh no additional comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No comments.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to close our regular meeting.
Second. Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Mm-hmm.